The Monday, December 1st, 2025 City of Andalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll begin with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Council, you've had an opportunity to review the budget workshop meeting minutes of October 14th and October 20th. Are there any comments or revisions? Being none they stand approved, that brings us to Communications, Petitions and Awards, where we have an introduction, and I'll turn it over to Captain Kremm.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to fill in for Chief Suker, who was unable to attend tonight's meeting, but he did provide me with his notes and speech, so hopefully I'll give it the same vigor that Brandon does.
Do a better job.
I'll do a better job, yeah. I'm here to share some information about our Mobile Crisis Responder Program and introduce the newest member of that effort. Let me start with why this program matters. Back in 2019, we took part in a Mobile Crisis Response Pilot Program in conjunction with Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services. What we learned in that pilot program was clear: When someone in our community is facing a mental health crisis, struggling with addiction, or experiencing a situation where traditional law enforcement isn't the only or best tool, we need more options on the table. So in 2020, the Crisis Responder Program moved from pilot to full operation. The purpose was simple but powerful: Pair law enforcement with certified mental health specialists and give those specialists the ability to respond with care, skill, and the right resources. It's about meeting people where they are, in their hardest moments, and offering support that can truly change the direction of a life. Our goal has already, has always been twofold: Reduce the impact of those situations on our community and our officers, and two, provide real help to our residents in crisis. Since the program's inception, we've partnered with the Butler Township Police Department through a shared cost model, and we've seen the direct measurable benefits. Calls or service involving repeat crises have gone down, and just as importantly, follow-up has become a cornerstone of this work. Those frequent follow-up calls and visits may look simple on paper, but they've been transformative in practice: Educating residents about local resources they didn't know existed, helping families navigate the next steps, working alongside team, sorry, care teams to support treatment and medication plans, and offering a steady human connection where there once was only an emergency response. These efforts have improved the quality of life for people who need a hand, and they've helped reduce strain on law enforcement by letting trained professionals step in with expertise that fits the moment. That's not just good public safety, it's good community care. Now, as many of you know, funding for programs like this can be a moving target. Over time, support shifted from partner grants to the participating community shouldering most of the cost. Through all of that, we've stayed committed. The Vandelia Division of Police remains committed to this program as it provides valuable resources to our residents and truly makes us a top-tier community to reside in. We remain committed to seeking outside funding sources to ensure these resources remain available and to ensure we remain fiscally responsible with our citizens' tax dollars. With that being said, I am pleased to announce that we have been awarded a grant worth nearly $191,000. That funding will cover the full cost of this program through 2026 and likely through the fall of 2027 for both Vandelia and Butler Township. That means stability, it means continued service, and most importantly, it means continued care for the residents who rely on this program. Today, we partnered with South Community Behavioral Health, who provide the professional responders we deploy here in Vandelia. Now, with that foundation in place, I want to introduce someone who will help carry this work forward. It's my pleasure to introduce Trina Stewart, our new Mobile Crisis Responder. Trina began working with us the first week of September. She's a resident of Vandelia and she knows our community, not just as a professional, but as a neighbor. That matters. When someone shows up at your door during a crisis, trust and understanding can make all the difference. Trina brings an outstanding background to this role. She previously served as a Case Manager Coordinator with the Ohio Rise Program, where she specialized in coordinating health services for children and families. She also worked as a Student Resiliency Coordinator with Dayton Children's Hospital, supporting young people through some of the most challenging times in their lives. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Rehabilitation from Wright State University, and a Master of Science in Social Work from Capella University, education grounded in service, and experience grounded in real-world impact. We are incredibly fortunate to have her with us. Trina, we're glad you're here, and we're excited about what you're bringing to this program and to Vandelia. I'd like to give Trina, Trina some time to answer your questions and delve into her background, her professional experiences, and her goals of this program.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. I was very excited to take this, this role. Being a resident of Vandelia, I was excited to be able to bring on my experience to Vandelia and help the residents. It really makes me look like, you know, part of family, be a part of family, a familiar face to those when I'm in a grocery store, or just walking down the street at a festival, whatever. So, he said a lot, so I'm not really sure what else I have, but that I'm excited to bring my expertise right here in Vandelia.
We're definitely excited to have you here also, and does anyone else have any comments?
Just welcome.
All right. All right. Thank you. All right, we have no public hearing. That brings us to comments from interested citizens. So at this time, I'd like to welcome comments from interested citizens. As you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address clearly for the record, and we further ask that those who speak, please follow the etiquette of communicating with respect to others. And as a courtesy, please try to stay on topic with your statements while you address council, and a reminder, this is not a forum for arguments or debates. In an effort to give all citizens an opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible and limit them to five minutes. And also, if you're here to speak regarding the Addison Properties, please wait till the public hearing portion of that ordinance. So if there's anyone who'd like to make a general comment, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is not regarding the Addison Properties.
I was shaking my head no, like, did you know?
I'll get to that later.
Okay.
No, thank you. Over the last year, several council members and staff have asked me a lot about what do companies coming to Ohio and coming to Dayton, what do they look at and look for when coming to a community, when we're trying to attract companies to our town and our state? During several of these meetings, I was at Wilmington's Council Meeting a few nights ago, you hear a lot of things. I've heard a lot of, recently, a lot of things about if cities don't approve, if it's retail, if it's housing, you know, fill in the blank, that it makes them appear like they're not open for business. I've done this a long time. I would, I think that's furthest from the truth. When attracting companies or growing companies that are local, they are looking at many things. The biggest thing is land. Like, if you don't have land, you will not be looked at unless you're buying land and redeveloping it, tearing it down. You look at companies like Joby Aviation at the airport, Sierra Nevada at the airport, Honda in Fayette County, Westrafo in Trotwood, and the list goes on. These companies, they actually look at about a 45-mile radius of where they're going to get their employees from. So they're not looking at the micro, but they're looking at the macro. When looking in Vandelia, we still have, I think, some very strategic property up by the airport, Stone Quarry Crossings, Northwoods. I would urge you to continue to market those, make sure those properties are ready for development, because when developers want to move, they want to move quickly. But at the end of the day, they are looking as far north as Sydney, down to Butler County, Warren County, you know, east and west. So as several people have asked me that question, I thought tonight would be a perfect night to bring this up, as we do have a housing issue later in the topic. So as I end my remarks, I'll open it up if you have any questions for me tonight, and if not, you're all welcome to call me or email me like some have in the past.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, we'll move on to the City Manager's Report, where we have a couple of information items. Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first one regards leaf collection, and leaf collection officially ends tomorrow, December 2nd, however, depending on weather, which I think we all know, there's some weather coming in tonight. Crews will plan to make a few more passes throughout the city to collect leaves, weather permitting, over the next week or two. So if their leaves still need to be collected, make sure they're at the curb for our crews to pick up. The second thing is our 2025-2026 Annual Report and Calendar. So the Vandelia Butler High School Honor Society will once again be distributing the 2025 and 2026 Annual Report and Calendar to every residence and business on Saturday, December 20th, 2025. Every annual report and calendar will be delivered in shrink wrap to prevent damage due to exposure to moisture. In recognition of their community service, the city will make a contribution, as we do each year, to the Honor Society Scholarship Fund.
All right, thank you. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 25-R-55. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution approving Section 15 of the Stone Quarry Crossing subdivision.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Choice One Engineering, on behalf of the City of Vandelia, requests subdivision approval for Section 15 of the Stone Quarry Crossing subdivision. The request involves two parcels totaling 24.849 acres, plus or minus, located at 9085 Peters Pike in the City of Vandelia. If approved, the two existing parcels would be consolidated into one new parcel totaling 23.744 acres, with an additional 1.105 acres dedicated as public right-of-way. On November 11th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the proposed record plan.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 25-R-55 as read.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Resolution 25-R-55 as presented. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I have one. When I ran for council, I made a promise that I would never vote for another warehouse in the City of Vandelia. Therefore, that's going to be my vote.
There is an explanation of the difference between this one as having the availability to have some warehouse space, as opposed to being a distribution center. So there is that distinction.
Yeah, I guess.
Would you like to explain a little bit more?
Yes. So the developer who has approached the city to purchase this property has indicated that their marketing is traditionally going to be toward manufacturing, and as mentioned during the public comments, there's a number of vendors that are in or around the airport that have expressed interest with this developer, and so we feel quite confident that there's a possibility that this will lead to more jobs in manufacturing, rather than just logistics and storage as a warehouse facility.
Yeah, and I know Jobs Ohio is somewhat involved with this and so forth. Also, the layout of this, the part that faces the street at Peters Pike is not dock side. The dock side's going to be facing to the west, and so those would be ancillary for the manufacturing and obviously goods in, goods out, that type of thing. And this has been all explained to us, and with the first possible anchor, there's others that are looking, potential to come in, again, manufacturing side of it, and I know that's one of the things that when we looked at this property years ago, and somebody sitting in the audience that helped do that, that we're trying to attract that manufacturing, and we were trying to be diversified because of industry. It wasn't just, this area was really more thought of that, and we've tried to be very specific in making sure that that does, that type of business does go in there. There's no guarantee that it's not going to be warehouse, but certainly with some of the innuendos, I guess, and possibilities, especially with Jobs Ohio being involved, this was highly anticipated to bring more manufacturing. So I'm good with this.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
No.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes six one. All right. Pages are a little out of order here, so. All right, next we have Ordinance 25-31.
Thirty. Thirty. Oh.
Thirty. I'm sorry, excuse me, thirty.
An ordinance approving a PUD major amendment and revised final plan for 175 Northwoods Boulevard owned by Pilot Travel Centers in the Planned Unit Development District.
Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Pilot Travel Centers, requests approval of a major amendment to an existing planned unit development. The request involves one parcel totaling 13.15 acres located at 175 Northwoods Boulevard in the City of Vandelia. If approved, the proposed amendment would allow for the construction of an additional 1,232 square foot accessory structure and associated signage within the existing planned unit development. On November 11th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend approval of the proposed major amendment.
All right, thank you. Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 25-30 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley, and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Ordinance 25-30 in its first reading. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next we have Ordinance 25-31. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending Sections 121402, 121404, 121407, 121408, 121411, 122203, 122205, and 122206 of the codified ordinances of the City of Vandelia regarding review procedures, planned unit developments, and the Vandelia, planned unit developments. Well, we took out the Vandelia city overlay place, so forgot to change that part in the title.
All right, thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. Based on discussion with the Law Director and members of the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, staff has prepared a set of procedural updates to the text of the zoning code. The proposal includes revisions to Chapter 1214, review procedures, Chapter 1220, the overlay zoning districts, and Chapter 1222, the planned unit developments. On November 11th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the proposed code amendments.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Real quick, point of clarification. I think the description you just read included the 1220, which this ordinance does not. That's been pulled out.
The 122004, which is the Vandelia overlay, I believe it is, has been taken out based on the comments, and that was at a study session, so we're not amending an ordinance. This is the ordinance in the first reading, but.
So all of 1220.
All the Vandelia overlay provisions have been taken out.
All right, thank you. Your Honor, I'll make an order to, or make a motion to approve Ordinance 25-31 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by Councilman Lewis to approve Ordinance 25-31 in its first reading. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next we have Ordinance 25-32 in its first reading. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending the master thoroughfare plan.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the recommendation of the Director of Public Service, staff has prepared updates and technical amendments to the Vandelia Thoroughfare Plan. As with previous updates, these amendments have been submitted for the Planning Commission's review and recommendation. On November 11th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the proposed updates to the thoroughfare plan.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I make motion to accept Ordinance 25-32 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan, and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Ordinance 25-32 in its first reading. Are there any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Next we have Ordinance 25-33 in its first reading.
An ordinance amending the City of Vandelia Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. Recreation Director Alicia McCracken will provide it information and gave recommendations to City Council at this evening's study session relating to parks and recreation department fees for the 2026 Castle Hills Pool and Castle Hills Golf Course seasons.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 25-33.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Ordinance 25-33 in its first reading. Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. We have one ordinance in its second reading, that being Ordinance 25-29. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving a PUD final plan and associated record plan for Section 1 of the Riverdale subdivision, generally located at 7848 South Brown School Road.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Addison Properties, requests approval of a PUD final plan and associated record plan for Section 1 of the Riverdale subdivision. The proposed final plan includes 58 single-family residential lots on 21.84 acres, plus or minus, of which 3.519 acres would be dedicated as public right-of-way. On October 28th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the proposed final plan and record plan.
All right, thank you. I want to remind council that a condition set forth in the passage of Ordinance 25-02 is for the completion of a traffic impact study prior to the implementation of changes prior to the approval of the final development plan, so please keep that in mind when voting on Ordinance 25-29. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, we'll open a public hearing, so if you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And in an effort to give all citizens an opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible and limit them to five minutes per Ordinance 84-01.
I thought you were going to get left to no comments. Good evening. My name is Jeff Hoagland, 817 Dearhurst Drive, with my wife Jennifer. I have two issues to go over this evening. One, we all know the planned unit development has been approved. We understand the housing development is going to happen. I am here tonight, my wife and I are here tonight, to make sure the final development plan is done properly and legally, and we do not think that is the case. First, let's go over the actual language that should have been approved by council in the final development plan. The fourth condition approved by council actually stated, quote, "The completion of a traffic study prior and implementation of changes prior to the approval of the final development plan," as Mayor Herbst read. First, the workshop regarding this, first, at the workshop regarding this issue, a couple of council members said what they voted on was not their intent. It doesn't matter if that was, if it was your intent or not. I know Mr. Shanahan brought this up at the last council meeting, but it was not the intent of the referendum committee to have the wrong form. It was not the intent of the law director to provide us the wrong form. It was not the intent of the committee to gather 750 signatures on an invalid form. But it was what happened. In the committee, in residents of Vandelia, had to live with it legally. When taken individually, quote, "completion of a traffic study," and, end quote, then, "and," quote, "implementation of changes," end quote, could mean the same thing, but you must take them together because of the word "and." You can use ChatGPT, you can use Gemini, you can use any AI feature you want, and when you put the motion into that AI software, it's very clear what it says. So the final construction drawings, engineering estimates, bidding requirements, and construction of those changes must, so pursuant to ChatGPT, it says, "Any required traffic-related changes must also be made before approval of the plan." So the final construction drawings, engineering estimates, bidding requirements, and construction of those changes must be completed prior to the final plan approval. This is what was voted on, even if it was not the intent. We are fortunate that Mr. Shanahan went back and watched the March 3rd council meeting and realized the language, quote, "and implementation of changes prior to the approval," was omitted from the final ordinance language. Second, regarding the funding of the road improvements, it is not the responsibility of the City Council to pay for any improvements for the subdivision if they choose not to, if you choose not to. If the developer wants the housing development to happen, they can pay for it all. On Brown School, at Little York, any changes that need to be made, so it still hasn't been addressed. The hill coming up Brown School as you're turning left or north, there is a sight line issue that still hasn't been addressed. I haven't seen it or heard about it at any of the meetings. I know I've talked to staff about it. It still hasn't been addressed. It's not in any estimate. The development, developer has said that they did not create the problem at Brown School and Little York. No one is arguing that. Staff has said there's, there have been no complaints about the traffic problem at Little York and Brown School. But we all know the reality. When the light was put in over 15 years ago, staff knew this was a temporary fix. I know that. I was here. Many of you were in, at council as well, on council as well. If this was such a high priority, I take that back. If this was such a high priority, why was it not in the 2026 Vandelia budget that was approved at the last council meeting as an emergency? If this was such a high priority, why was it not in the five-to-10-year capital improvement plan? For the developer to say he'll pay 30% to me is unacceptable. They should pay 100% if they want this project to happen. The city, through their 2026 budget process and their five-to-10-year CIP plan, has ranked projects higher than this one at Little York and Brown School. For council to bump this project ahead of others identified by staff is fiscally irresponsible. And back to the comment by staff that there have been no complaints about Little York and Brown School. So this is the, I didn't print a color one, but this is the 10-year resurfacing, tentative resurfacing plan through 2035 that's on the webpage that you all have approved. If you look out to 2030 or 2035, I don't think anyone is complaining right now that their street needs repaired, so there are no complaints. For the developer to. Mayor, may I continue, or do you need me to?
Please do. I mean, continue.
As brief as possible.
Thank you. Oh, I will. I'm on my last page. So once again, the improvement at Little York and Brown School were not identified by staff as important as others already approved by council. And keep in mind, this traffic study was done and completed in June of 2025. If it was that important, staff would have put it into the 2026 budget or the five-to-10-year CIP plan, but it's not there. So I urge council that if you feel like you need or want to approve the final development plan tonight, that you make the developer pay for all of the improvements. Council has not stated you will pay for the improvements. It was not in your ordinance or in any of the conditions that you approved. It is not in your 2026 or your 2026 to 2030 CIP plan. It is not the financial responsibility of the City Council to pay for these improvements as it relates to this new housing development. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
I am Barbara Brysh. I live at.
I live at eight-nine-eight Deerhurst on the south side. My home in the home across the street is probably most affected. There's a lot of things I don't like about this, and I've spoken many times about this subdivision, the high density, the look of the homes themselves, the vinyl village. However, the one thing I have said over and over and over, and no one has heard me, is that Deerhurst should not go straight across Brown School and that become the entrance. That is a situation waiting for a happening multiple times. People coming up the hill. You do not see cars coming up the hill until they're almost at the top of the hill and getting a higher impact of all these cars pulling out from the new part of Deerhurst, which was going to be named something else, is just going to make more problems. I said it at least four or five times here, that any entrance, and we know something's going to be built, we know that, but the entrance should be further up Brown School so that you don't have a road going straight across where that hill is. Right now, I'd like to invite all of you to go open up that gate to the new construction area, park there, especially at night, and try to go right or left. And I think you'll see the problem. Anymore, my husband and I go all the way around to Foxfire if we're going north. Going south is not the issue, but going north. And in retrospect, probably thirty-some years ago, Deerhurst should never have been put where it is because of being at the top of the hill. But it, the traffic back then was nothing compared to what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
Robert Shanahan, seventy-seven thirty-three South Brown School Road, Vandelia. I had a pretty long spiel, but Jeff took it all, so I won't repeat that. I also wonder where the couple weeks go. But something that concerns me is the way that the choice one engineering recommended that Addison could pay a fee in lieu, right? I don't know, twenty percent, thirty, whatever it was. But what kind of confuses me is that, so the city asked Addison, asked Addison engineers to determine a cost estimate to improve the intersection at Brown School and Little York. Yeah, the Addison engineers came up with a cost estimate to determine the fee in lieu payable by Addison. The same cost estimate that Vandelia engineers, choice one engineering, reviewed and then stated to Rob Cron in an email, and I quote, "Our review of the concept plan and preliminary construction estimate indicates that several construction line items are missing, and some of the estimated quantities at unit costs appear to be lower than expected," end quote. And this is in twenty-two-five dollars. Who knows what the cost will really be in twenty-twenty-seven or whenever the work finally gets started? And who covers the excess? I know, we do, taxpayers.
Thank you.
Alex Conardre, seven-five-one Foxfire Trail. The developer has noted during the March third meeting, he even said that, even if he may not agree with it, he'll do what we, what you guys ask of them in order to make this development happen. I think you guys need to hold the developer accountable for that. He even said that during the study session two meetings ago as well. So I think in order for you guys to be consistent, you need to hold them agreeable to what they have agreed to do, that they as the developer. Additionally, I think, I believe Council owes the citizens a fiscal responsibility to not allow any dirt in Riverdale to be moved, nor the section one plan to be approved until the following criteria have been met. The suggested roadway improvements to Brown School, Little York intersection are engineered. The final engineer plans have been bid out and accepted, and I think if we can see, as Mr. Shanahan said a minute ago, the last five years have shown that estimates and actual costs can be significantly different, so we need to get the full cost of what the project's going to be. And the developer needs to prepay for their, whatever they're supposed to pay, preferably a hundred percent of it, with an overage in case the job has a cost overrun. I know that the developer or the city, there was a proposal in what you guys received that the developer paid their installment in three sections, one with each section. We're not a bank. This isn't the Bank of Vandelia. If they want to do the job, they know that's a risk they have to take with their investment to do this project. They need to pay it all upfront, and that, there should be no forgiveness on that. There should be no installment plans. If you guys choose an alternative plan, well, like I said, I still think that they should pay a hundred percent. If you guys choose an alternative plan, I still think that everything needs to be engineered and bid out before they pay, and they pay before you move any dirt. I think as long as all those stipulations are agreed upon, then, and everything's followed and all those checkboxes are hit, then I think it's acceptable for them to concurrently start putting their infrastructure in for their roads while the improvements are being done after the job has been bid and accepted for the improvements. Additionally, considering the poor rating of the traffic, that the traffic study showed, I think it would be best practice that when the developer makes the improvements to Brown School Road that they previously agreed upon to add the curb and the sidewalk and everything, I know in their proposal, they want to do Deerhurst to Foxfire that section first and then down the road do the next section to the north. I think considering the, the poor rating of the traffic study and the, being that the improvements aren't going to really enhance, add that much to it, I think they need to do all the improvements from, you know, basically from Deerhurst all the way to upwards of Poplar Creek. That all needs to be done at one time. I think it would be, doing it in two phases, I think, is irresponsible, and I think the traffic study shows that we have a problem, and then you want to cause inconvenience on the road with another hundred, a hundred and twenty homes already in place and cause a larger traffic jam on an already congested road. So I think doing one disruption to the travelers of Brown School Road is better than two disruptions. And that's what I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment?
Good evening. My name is Leon Mabel. I live at seven-seven-eight Foxfire Trail in Vandelia. I think, I'm not going to reiterate what everybody said, but I think we can all agree this is a mess. And I think it's, the City Council needs to clarify what exactly was in that ordinance, how you voted on it, and clarify that and let us citizens know about that. That's the first thing. The second thing is the traffic study. That was supposed to have been done before any dirt was turned over, and now there's a rush to get that done. So I would respectfully ask Council that you straighten out these matters before you press ahead. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Gloria Shanahan, seven-seven-three-three South Brown School Road. I wasn't really going to speak, but this somewhat has to do with all the new homes that we anticipate will eventually going in on Brown School Road. I, the other night, called the non-emergency police number to report a vehicle going at least a hundred miles per hour, because I could hear it in my kitchen, which is in the back of my house, going past on South Brown School, about five times. Apparently, drag racing by itself, I don't know, but we already have a problem with extensive traffic on Brown School Road. That hill is a problem coming up. Even for us to pull out of our driveway, five, six minutes is not unusual now. We've been there twenty-one years. We used to be able to pull out quite easily. We sit and sit and sit, to the point where I'm like, oh, I'm going to be late for work. So we have an issue with traffic, for sure. It is very dangerous. I will agree with the other comments made by the other woman of that hill at the very top. When these cars are going that fast, I don't know if any of you remember, but we have a nice line of trees going across the front of our property, property, and about a year and a half ago, somebody was pulling out of the new Fox, the Foxfire entrance right next to us, so it would not be Deerhurst, it would be Foxfire Trail, an older lady. A pickup truck was coming up the hill. She didn't see it. Maybe she should have, but she didn't. He tried to avoid her and came right through our entire front yard, and a tree went right through his truck. They had to use the jaws of life or whatever to get him out. That was just somebody pulling out of Foxfire Trail. That's further up than Deerhurst. We have a problem with speed. We have a problem with visibility. We have a huge problem. I do agree that all this work needs to be done before any construction starts at this new development, and I am not against development across the street. A lot of people think we're, we just don't want houses. That's not true. We want it done right. We want it done thoughtfully. I just think that everybody needs to look at all the ramifications. You're going to have to shut down Little York Road to make those improvements, and you're going to have to shut down Brown School Road. There is no way that's just going to be a couple weeks project. That's a huge project. That hill coming up, there's a big culvert. The cost is going to be way more than what was anticipated at the last meeting, I don't know, last month or whatever. There is no way. It's only going to be, what was it, four hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars? Not when you look at how much a traffic circle costs on Miller Lane.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kirk, I have a question. Since the hill's not really part of, wasn't really touched on, that would probably, since we're becoming more aware of that, be something the staff would address in future budgets, correct?
Right. We would have to, we'd have to look at engineering, cost and factors, and what all would need to go into that to come up with cost and timing and everything that would go into making that change.
So that part would come back fully on the city? Unless we got extra money in from other...
Right. That was not included, that I'm aware of, in the traffic impact study. It was only the intersection.
Reiterating that, yes. Thank you.
All right, one last time. Is there any one else who would like to speak? All right. We'll close the public hearing. All right, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-nine, approving a PUD final plan and associated record plan for section one of the Riverdale subdivision generally located at seventy-eight forty-eight South Brown School Road contingent upon all the costs associated with engineering design, construction cost estimates, bidding and construction of all improvements on South Brown School Road. Improvements at Little York and Brown School Road and any other road improvement costs are at the sole expense of the developer.
Second.
City staff must approve all engineering, design, construction estimates. Oh, I didn't, I forgot the second. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I read all this.
You're making your motion.
Yes, I am. Cost estimates, public bidding, and any other street and infrastructure improvements prior to final record plan approval. All construction projects are put out to public bid and bids received so that the city developer knows exact cost of construction prior to approval of the final record plan. The developer will pay the city upfront or in escrow the full amount of all construction costs related to all public improvements as stated above, plus a ten percent contingency prior to the final record plan going into effect.
Second.
I did.
Second?
Second.
What was all the laughing about?
She just jumped in.
Oh.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-nine in its second reading with the conditions that she noted and will have to provide to us.
I will ask City Council if any of them need those conditions repeated. I have no idea what they were right now, because there was a lot more than my brain was ready to pick up, and I stopped writing. So before we vote, you know, since we need to know what we're voting on, I think that those conditions need to be restated.
I thought I did that pretty slow.
No, you were like...
Really, I'm sorry.
Slow it down.
All costs associated with engineering design, construction cost estimates, bidding and construction of all improvements on South Brown School Road. Improvements at Little York and Brown School Road and any other road improvement costs are at the sole expense of the developer. City staff must approve all engineering design, construction cost estimates, public bidding and any other street and infrastructure improvements prior to final record plan approval. All construction projects are put out to public bid and bids received so that the city and developer know the exact cost of construction prior to approval of the final record plan. The developer will pay the city upfront or in escrow the full amount of all construction costs related to all public improvements as stated above, plus a ten percent contingency prior to the final record plan going into effect. I'm done.
All right. Any comments from Council?
Yes. I'm just going to stay on the record because the traffic impact study was a requirement or a condition of the preliminary plan, which we have never required for a residential development before. That was completed. We now have identified substantial deficiencies at the intersection of Little York and Brown School that are, that in no way, shape, or form are caused by the proposed development. They are the current conditions, not the conditions that are being caused by this development. So we have a problem now. That being said, that, that problem and the correction of that problem, to ask a developer who is trying to improve a housing situation in our community to bear a hundred percent of that cost is an insane ask, I believe. They have proposed through their traffic engineer and supported by the city's independent traffic engineer to share the cost of proposed improvements for what their development is believed to contribute all the way out to twenty forty-seven, I believe, is what the, the traffic engineering or impact study proves or supports. So I don't, I mean, to use the comment of a resident earlier talking about us being open for business, this sends a message that we are not open for business. By asking a developer to bear the expense of road improvements for something that right now exists regardless of whether that housing development goes in or not, and I do not see how that is a rational request that this body should put on a developer.
When you separate, you have to, we have, there's so many parts of this whole operation, but the ordinance that was voted on cannot be misconstrued, I do not believe. The completion of a traffic study prior and implementation of changes prior to the approval of final development plan. You can look at that all different ways. Those are two things. I'm not even asking for that. Could ask, and personally, I think it'd be appropriate in this situation to have those changes done ahead of time. We, as a city, have not appropriated this money. Our staff tries, tries to find a way to make it work because they think the council wants that to happen. But there's no way to not understand that if, if we put this in our twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, we are reprioritizing this development over the problems that our staff has already recognized and has put in a capital improvement budget. I don't think, in my years here, I have ever run into any time where we made an emergency change to our budget to make a development happen. We're not saying no to it, but it's not in our budget this year or next year, and it's not in our five-year capital plan. So if it wants to happen now, in my opinion, they need to pay for it. Our staff, I mean, I, our staff has acted as though and said that they can make this work. We don't work like this. Our, our staff, if it's an emergency, they should, they would come up with these other funding and other resources, but this is not an emergency. So it's not a no to them, it's that it can't happen right now. So it's not a no to them, it's that it can't happen right now.
I see it differently. I see that the traffic study revealed an emergency that residents have already been complaining about, that if there's, there is a safety concern and there is an issue on the road that we need to plan and adjust for, and I, I almost feel that it's discriminatory to, to put that all on a developer when we're being told whether or not they develop, we gotta fix that road, and, and our citizens are going through a safety hazard every time they drive down that street or turn on it, and we need to fix it today.
The safety hazard is not even being addressed. The intersection, which is uncomfortable and not timely, is being addressed in this. The city will end up having to go back and probably secure the funds and put that in a budget to reduce that hill down.
We have to start now. And it's, we have to recognize that we play a part in that, and we have been, as Cory stated, I'm, I'm gonna misquote him probably, but he said, "We were put on notice the day that we got the, the traffic study that we have a problem that we have to fix." So outside of the developer, we have a responsibility to start fixing that, and whether we have to make movements in money or whatever, it's not like we don't have it. We can figure out how to pay for it, and staff can make those changes. That is not fair to a developer to have to fix all of those things. But I do recognize we have to start changing that for every person that lives there now. That has to happen. So I, I don't agree that they're going to, I mean, we need to make the vote because the motion's on the floor, but I don't agree that they need to pay for the whole thing.
And let's, and let's just be clear about the financial commitment that we're talking about. In 2026, the impact would be the engineering of the improved roadway and that expense, not the actual construction. And I'm sorry, but at the end of October, we had a unencumbered general fund balance north of $20 million. An engineering study is not going to be something that cannot be covered, maybe even with appropriated funds for 2026, or if we need to do a supplemental for $200,000, of which part, if approved, would be paid by the developer. I think the city's outlay for that engineering would be rather minimal in our overall budget when, again, we have a healthy fund balance. So it's not an emergency that something else is gonna get canceled or anything else in 2026 because we need to do engineering work to get this project moving. And as far as a 2026 to 2031 capital improvements plan, that five-year plan is always a moving target. The only thing we appropriate funds for is the very next year. So there could be things that staff comes back next year that weren't in the plan this year that we add to that plan. It's a five-year plan that does not allocate money. The only thing we allocate money for is year one of the, of the CIP in the annual appropriations budget. So it's not like we've committed funds for five years that can't be massaged, moved, readjusted, or outside funding obtained through grant money through staff's efforts next year.
And I would agree with, with what's been recently said as far as the cost and who bears that cost. You know, we looked at the preliminary plan, and then we're facing the final plan contingent on a study that, again, the intent was, and what I voted on was that it would be concurrent, any improvements would be concurrent with any improvements in that. So for me, this does not change anything. It's like the call was made on the field, a football analogy, that, you know, there's a dispute on that, and so you have to go to instant replay, and for me, there's no evidence to overturn that decision for me to change my mind, and I do appreciate those that have reached out to shed some new light, some new thoughts on this. I, I really am not seeing where the city is, or where the city is responsible for the intersection. As it's been said, we have identified that, and that's why I said before, we've identified that, that we know about it, we have to do something about it. When is that gonna happen? Well, it needs to happen before something gravely happens, before, you know, we're said, "Okay, we knew about that, there's an accident, now why didn't you do something about it?" Well, here's the chance to do something about it. So I don't think it's prudent upon us to put 100% burden on the developer to say they're responsible for Little York and Brown School. In front of their area, yes. I would say 100% of what they do, and they've already committed to that, fixing that 100% in front of them. As far as possibly what was suggested, you know, getting all that cost upfront in an escrow account, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I don't know if that's the way to go with it, but certainly, I, I think that would say, I think that would be a commitment to say, yes, we, we are going to take care of what we, what we caused the effect of. Beyond that, that's pretty much where I'm at.
All right. Does anyone else have any comments? I feel very similar. I think we all agree that Brown School needs to be addressed, and I agree with much of the motion. However, I do struggle with putting 100% of that burden on a developer. I think if it was a, you know, a different percentage, something like that, but to put 100% of the cost on a developer, I, I just find that unreasonable. I believe the property needs to be developed, it needs to be developed for homes. So my biggest issue would be the burdening the developer with 100% of the cost for those improvements.
Fifty, fifty?
Please?
Fifty, fifty?
Can I ask for clarification from the law director on something? The motion that's on the floor, if it is defeated, can a subsequent motion be made with other conditions?
Yes.
Thank you. Call the question, please.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Follick.
No.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver.
No.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee.
No.
Mayor Herbst.
No. And by a vote of four to two, that motion fails.
Four to three.
Four to three.
So we still have the issue of the ordinance. And may I remind council that payment of any of this stuff is not part of the ordinance.
Can you say that again? What was that?
How it gets paid for is something council, I mean, you can put that as a condition of the ordinance, but as presented, paying all at once, paying in escrow, paying all that other stuff, that was a proposal. That is not part of the ordinance. The ordinance is to approve or not to approve. Let's say it's, if it's not approved, it's all done, we go home. If it is approved, then the next question is, okay, well, how is this? And staff will look to council for direction on what, what is your desire on how you guys wanna handle this? That whole how much paid upfront, that kind of stuff, so. So unless it's a condition as to the passage, it is not really part of this ordinance.
That doesn't have to be decided tonight.
It does not, unless, again, unless somebody makes it a condition.
Okay.
Your honor, I'll make an, or make a motion to approve ordinance 25-29 in the second reading with the conditions listed in Exhibit B and accept fees in lieu of improvements at Little York and Brown School as identified in the traffic impact study payable in three equal payments totaling $175,480, which is the estimated improvements, the developer's share of the estimated improvements and a 20% contingency.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Follick and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve ordinance 25-29 in its second reading with the conditions noted. I ask again, is there any comments or questions regarding that motion before we vote?
And again, for clarification, I ask if council needs those, that condition to be read again, or are you guys good with what was just...
Does everybody understand the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's try it again.
And I'm sorry, who, who seconded the motion?
Vice Mayor Blakeslee.
Different color. Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
No.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes four, three.
Sorry.
All right, we have no emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions. The first item is a variance at 411 Birdsong Drive. Mr. Althouse.
Thank you, your honor. The applicant, Ryan Gaul, has requested a variance to have eight chickens on less than four acres of land for the property located at 411 Birdsong Drive. The proposal involves allowing eight chickens on .33 acres of land. On November 12th, 2025, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted three to one to recommend denial of the variance.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move to deny the variance, BZA 2510, for chickens at 411 Birdsong Drive at the recommendation of the BZA.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follick, and I believe it was Councilman Lewis. I cut two motions here. Okay. To deny the variance, BZA 25-0010 for chickens at 411 Birdsong Drive. Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst? Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven, zero to deny.
And that was a motion to deny, correct?
All right. Next, we have variance, BZA 25-0011, maximum retail floor area at 9375 North Dixie Drive for a Dollar General. Mr. Althouse.
Enclosed in your packets was a memorandum from Mr. Graham in which the applicant Bradley Becker requested, I'm sorry, let me back up. Enclosed in a memorandum from Mr. Graham in which the applicant, Chor Swange Engineering, on behalf of SNS Leasing LLC, has requested a variance to construct a 10,640 square-foot retail establishment for the property located at 9375 North Dixie Drive. The proposal involves allowing 10,640-foot, square-foot retail establishment in the NB zoning district where retail establishments cannot exceed 5,000 square feet. On November 12th, 2025, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to zero to recommend approval of the variance.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I will recommend, how do you say it? Do you...
You can vote to approve it and then vote no, or you can recommend denial.
Okay. I wanna recommend denial of the variance for BZA 25-0011.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Avalotus Weaver and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to deny the variance, BZA 25-0011, for maximum retail floor area at 9375 North Dixie Drive for a Dollar General. I would concur with that. I know the BZA recommended four, zero to approve that, but this proposal is more than double what our zoning code allows in a building. That alone is enough to deny this, but with that, I'll ask if anyone else has any comments.
Just agree.
I would concur.
Yeah.
I agree.
That was my reasoning, is it's just not, doesn't match the plan that we have for our community.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry.
The motion is to deny.
I understand that. Can you repeat that? I didn't hear it, and I don't think the clerk heard it for, for the minutes, whatever you just said.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee seconded it.
Oh, it just doesn't match the planning that we have for that area in the community.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. You moved away from the microphone.
I did, I'm sorry. I was rolling.
All right, call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follick?
No.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion to deny passed six to one. Next, we have a variance, BZA 25-0012, front yard setback at 112 Gabriel Street.
Thank you, your honor. Enclosed in your packets was a memorandum from Mr. Graham in which the applicant Bradley Blacker has requested a variance to construct a 230-foot, square-foot porch within the front yard setback for the property located at 112 Gabriel Street. The proposal involves allowing a porch to encroach 10 feet into the minimum front yard setback. On November 12th, 2025, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to zero to recommend approval of the variance.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move to approve variance, BZA 2512, the front yard setback, 112 Gabriel Street, as recommended by the BZA.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Follick and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve variance, BZA 25002, for a front yard setback at 112 Gabriel Street. Any questions or comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven, zero. Next, we have a conditional use, PC 25-0018, at 9085 Peters Pike for a warehouse. Mr. Althouse.
Enclosed in your packets was a memorandum from Mr. Hamis in which the applicant, Marker Development, requests conditional use approval for property located at 9085 Peters Pike in the city of Van Dalia. The request is to construct a warehouse in the Office Industrial Park District. The property is owned by the city of Van Dalia. On November 11th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval with the following conditions. Number one, all parcels upon which the proposed conditional use shall be conducted must be consolidated before any building permit is issued for this site. Number two, all required roadway improvements shall be completed to the standards of and under the supervision of the Director of Public Service. And then following discussion during the November 17th study session, staff has prepared two additional conditions for council's consideration, that being number three, truck docks shall be permitted only on the west facade of any structure. All loading, unloading, or parking of tractor-trailer shall take place on the west side of any structure. And number four, truck traffic exiting the site onto Peters Pike shall be directed to turn left towards National Road.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your honor, I'm... Your honor, I'll move that we approve the conditional use, 25-0018, at 9085 Peters Pike with the four amendments.
Second.
Conditions.
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 Pardon me.
Second on the conditions. All right, we have a, a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve the conditional use, PC 25-0018, at 9085 Peters Pike with the four conditions. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
And I just want to point out, unlike the other conditions that were oral, these conditions are written down right in front of everybody, so I won't ask if you understood them, in case anybody out there wanted to know why I didn't do it in this case. Councilmember Lewis?
You know, they're all asking that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
No.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes six, one. And finally, that brings us to council comments, and we'll begin with our law director, Mr. McDonald tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Althouse.
I just wanted to say, welcome to Tricia, who's joining our Mobile Crisis Responder program in my years as police chief. I've seen the value of having that program, and we, we appreciate council's support of continuing that program, and I feel she's gonna be very effective in the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Follick?
Just one... Just one clarification or question regarding leaf collection. Residents can put leaves out with their trash, right, in any bag at any time? Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fairst?
Not a lot. I, I.
All right, we'll move on.
No. When Mr. Hoagland was speaking and I, I reminded me to, I've thought a lot about this development over the last couple of months, but one thing I guess I want to impress on people is that, in my, in my opinion, we want more housing, but we don't need more housing. In the same, we need businesses that have income tax that help supplement everybody's, all the expenses that we create and all the services that we get. Houses do not do that. Houses cost us money unless the people work in the city. We need, we, we want houses that fit Vandelia. We have limited space, so looking in the future, find those houses that we want to have here, because to me, as Mr. Hoagland said, it's, it's not a need to make us open for business. And it does, it's not negative to us to be more committed to finding out what fits within our neighborhoods, so. And it doesn't have to be a tremendously more expensive than what's being presented now, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Just wanted to say thank you for all of the discussion. It's really good to be able to have that opportunity to work things out. Maybe not everybody agrees all the time, but hopefully we can come to some type of consensus. And also, I hope that everyone makes time to come out on Sunday for our holiday tree lighting and market. It is at four o'clock at the rec center. It starts until 7:30.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Dugan?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Councilman Lewis?
No, thank you, your honor.
Have I got, I'm missing a name?
The Vice Mayor, but before he goes, I forgot one thing.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to thank staff publicly for the most recent addition of my Vandelia. During budget process, council had some very lengthy discussions as far as the ongoing issue regarding utility rates in Vandelia and what council's action has been in the past, and trying to explain to residents in more detail and more thoroughly how these decisions came about and what these monies are being used for and what they have to be used for in the future. And I know that, I think there were four pages, three, at least three, if not four pages dedicated to the utility rate issue. You know, this is an issue that has resulted from years of, of.
Neglect.
Neglect and inaction. And, you know, council three years ago made a very hard decision, but a very necessary decision, and I'm hoping that as we continue down this path and we see some of the projects come to fruition, that people will understand that the, the water utility rates are not just for the actual water being consumed in someone's home, but all the infrastructure and everything else that goes into getting that water to your faucet and being able to turn on, get clean water, flush a toilet, and it goes somewhere and not be problematic for our community. So I thank staff for putting the time and effort into that project, because I think it's an important thing that obviously gets a lot of conversation in the community, and hopefully the printed document, printed magazine that gets to every resident will help explain that, not so much what's talked about on social media, but actual facts that are in print. So thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
And thank you for articulating that. I think that needed to be said. Other than holiday celebration, I'm looking forward to and seeing Santa Claus, because I can tell him I've been, well, I'll, I'll leave that as to if I was on the naughty or good list. But yeah.
I'm just thinking, he probably shouldn't run into the rest of the council members that night.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
All right. I have no further comments, and since we weren't able to finish our executive session, I'd like to make a, or have a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment and/or compensation of a public employee.
So move.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee. Jerry wants to call the roll, so.
I do. Councilmember Follick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero.
Mayor, may I, may I approach before you go into executive session? So, like, similarly, I think you're back. May I approach in?
Yeah.
So we are going to go through the referendum process, the ordinance that was approved tonight, 25-29, so if I, maybe forget the referendum petition, which hopefully was.
Sorry. We plan to go through the referendum process for resolution for ordinance 25-29. We, per, per the charter, need the copy from the, from the city manager clerk. Hopefully, it's been updated. But if we could get that as soon as possible, we will get that certified back to the clerk per the charter, so that we can then gather the signatures to put this on the May ballot.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.